Good evening, everyone. We're gonna get rolling. I know we only have an hour. The city has another meeting. They gotta get across town to start, I believe, at 6:30. Is that right, Scott?
Yes, sir.
Oh, which guy?
All right, good evening, everyone. I am calling to order the special joint meeting of the River Falls Common Council and the school district, the school board of River Falls. I think that we will begin with a welcome. On behalf of the school district, we're really pleased to be hosting you this year. We're glad that you're here. I think that this is a really important thing for us to be able to do, for us together as elected officials, to talk about issues facing people in this area. So perhaps we would start over there with you, Nick, and we will introduce ourselves so that we all know who the person is.
Sounds good. Hi, I'm Nick Carroll. I'm from the school, Nick, of your class of 2001, and I serve on City Council. I have four kids.
My name's Jeff Bjork. I'm also a lifelong resident of River Falls, except for a short span when I was off in California. I graduated in '81, so just a couple of years ahead of Nick, 20 years. And you were born in '82, so older. One of the highlights of the meeting for me is I started up the RFHS Alumni Association when I moved back to town nine, 10 years ago. And, you know, we have 4,500 members or 5,000 members. And then we're always looking for a cause for something to do. We might have a couple, and Jamie's gonna bring up one this time. So, anyway.
Down in City Council, excited to be here. Good to see everybody.
I'm Diana Dean. I've been on City Council since 2013. I've been in River Falls since 1992. And I had two daughters, scope eight through twelve.
Todd, you're still also City Council. Lived here almost all my life, other than five years, so long time. Either resident here or just outside of town. So thanks for the offer.
Scott Simpson, the city administrator. I've been the administrator since 2009. So I have four kids. So I have a senior, a freshman, and a sixth grader in the school district this year. And my daughter just graduated last year, so she should stick up in college.
I'm Scott Morsette, filling in for Mayor Knight as council president. Been in town, back in town again since 2004. Been on the council since 2010. All three of my children went through the school district. My wife is a parent at Greenwood, so she's employed this week. So happy to be here. On behalf of the city, thank you for hosting us tonight. And look forward to reviewing the things that we can help each other with and talk about other opportunities for us to work together.
I'm Stacy Myers. I am not a River Falls native, although my children are, but I have been welcomed to this community and considerate people.
Yeah, home for me as well now for 10 years as the school district superintendent, Jamie Benson.
I'm Cindy Holbrook. I'm also a member of the school board and have lived in River Falls for, I go by my kids, I mean, 13 years.
My name's Alan Tuckton-Hagan, and I've lived in the district for 37 years now. I'm a board clerk, and I'm also a member of the Wisconsin School Board Association Board of Directors.
I'm Scholz. Similar to Nick, lifelong city resident, 1910. I still together, graduated 2000. And I've been on the school board since 2019. Three years, and I've got two kids who attend school, youngest going into kindergarten this year, and third graders.
I'm Casey. Came back to town here in '83. My wife attends the school with Jeff. We've got three daughters.
I'm Lindsay Curtis. My family and I have been in River Falls for eight years now. We have four kids, three are at Westside, and one are youngest, who said home with me for another couple of years. Been on the school board for...
My name's Mike Willer. I'm the newbie on the school board. I was elected in April. So before that, I had spent 10 years on it. And then resigned and came back. So I've had three kids go through the district. I'm also RFHS grad, 1986. And my wife is a teacher in the district at the middle school.
All right, well, we are going to move on to some updates, first from the school district and then from the city. It would be on our side a bit. We plan to go through points A and C fairly quickly. And then B will take a little bit longer and be kind of handed out to go. So I'll turn it over to Jamie.
Yeah, the school district has recently developed a strategic plan. And although it is not listed on the agenda, there is a handout. We are excited to have a strategic plan that, for the most part, can fit on a one-page document. There's some other details obviously tied in with this. That strategic plan was just approved by the board in June. It was put together after three public listening sessions. We did a community survey, staff survey, student survey. And it's a compilation of what we believe to be a pretty solid vision of where this community would like to see the district headed into the future. And so we wanted to share that with you. And I will not get into great detail regarding the strategic plan itself, other than to kind of use it as a segue to goal five that is listed on that document, because a couple of items that we wanted to share with you related to our district's happenings here, things coming up for us include, this month, we're going to be conducting interviews with three different firms to select one that will be a demographer to help us do enrollment projections. And they're gonna be pestering some of your staff at the city level to help gather some data, housing data, obviously, development data in the area and so on. And so we're pretty excited to kind of press the reset button. The last time we did an enrollment study, it's been several years, frankly. And we need to kind of recalibrate and see where we're at with our facility needs based on capacity, what might the enrollment trend look like. Frankly, we're not, in recent years, we have seen, I'll call it modest, enrollment increase. But COVID caused us to see a decrease, like many, if not most districts. We lost some student enrollment, some 50 students or so. This last year, we regained and grew by about 35 kids. And so prior to COVID, we were on a trend of growing by about 70 kids each and every year. So we want to do a formal study and try to take a look into the future with enrollment. And that'll help us in a number of ways, not just with facility needs, capacity needs, but also staffing needs. And as you can understand, there's some other implications that are tied in with where we headed into the future. I know Scott Simpson and the council does a great job of forward-thinking and looking into the future and planning for the future. And that's why we're doing it on our end as well. Our facility needs, we also included in a community survey, we asked a question. Actually listed five specific facility potential needs. Issues that came up during listening sessions, issues that we've identified as a board and as a district as we look into the future. And I'll rattle off those five things if I can do it from memory right now. One is an extremely antiquated, aging, outdated bus garage. Our transportation center is, if you had children inside the walls of a school that were the same quality of our transportation center, there would be a mutiny. You wouldn't put up with it. And we're gonna need to do something soon. All of these things, by the way, that I'm going to mention are not things that the district can simply write a check out for. It would involve asking for community support by way of a referendum. So transportation center needs. We've talked about taking our artificial turf behind this school and turning it into an athletic stadium that would involve adding bleachers, press box, concession stand, restrooms, and so on. That's a debatable topic. We've talked about adding a middle school gymnasium, largely due to community needs, community space needs, recreational needs, somewhat also due to our needs as a school district. We know and understand that on our list of needs, I said I was gonna challenge myself to get to five. And so I've got two more to go here. One is a school forest facility. So we've partnered with the city, and we're gonna talk a little bit and celebrate some of those partnerships later on in our agenda. But the long and the short of it is, we've gained new access due to some partnerships with the Kinney River Land Trust. We have better access to our school forest than ever before. We're looking to make some improvements to that school forest, trails, signage. Potentially, in the future, looking at having a learning center, a facility at that school forest. If one, somebody's gonna have to help me now. Indoor, indoor fieldhouse attached to this facility. That would be for obvious community use as well as school use, fieldhouse meaning gymnasium, other athletic space needs. All of these are very much concept. There are no designs. We haven't really been discussing them publicly, other than, I mentioned, we put those five things in a community survey. And so as we move forward now, this month, we are, as I mentioned, hiring a demographer. All of this will feed together. Once we, it'll take a few months to get a demographer study done to help us with some enrollment projections. Which parts of this community are gonna grow the most? Which of our elementaries, of which we have four, are gonna see the greatest growth? Are we gonna need to someday look at redistricting elementary attendance areas? That will be a fun one if we get into that. That'll be exciting. A lot of parents will be excited to know if and when we ever have to change attendance boundaries, can be rather controversial. So that was sarcasm. Humor. The sixth thing with facilities is, of course, there's all kinds of general facility needs by way of maintenance, whether it's parking lots to rooftops or anything in between, reassessing what our needs are with our existing facilities and so on. And so that's a big part of our strategic plan. We're moving in that direction right now on some of those things, as I mentioned. And I guess with no other details to add, I want to stop there before I give you an update on state budget. So any questions about what I mentioned with strategic plan, facilities, enrollment study, and those aspects?
If I could ask a question, a question I have is not just for the high school, but for the whole school district. What percentage are we at capacity right now?
You know, I can't say off the top of my head the percentage. When we, in 2008, passed a referendum, the community was very generous and had resounding 73% of those that voted were in favor and part of what we were asking for was to add some classrooms onto our elementary schools to accommodate for growth needs. And so we projected adequately for the time, but we know it's time for us to reassess that. And so I can't say, you know, we're at 80% or 90%, to be honest. Ask me that question in three months or four months, and I'll probably be able to give you a better answer.
Right there. Jamie, I think it's 2018.
Oh, I'm sorry. If I did, yeah, 2018 is the last referendum.
I've asked that question, you know, from somebody who doesn't know how the schools are running. The way it's been presented to me from the elementary level, Jeff, was, you know, they run so many sessions. And it's not like you wouldn't have space to potentially add classrooms. But then you run into issues with who uses the gym on what days, and you're not having, you know, too many classrooms or sessions, I guess they called it. Yeah, sections, I'm sorry, yeah, sections to be able to divide that space up without having to affect the scheduling even more so than it already would be. So it's not even a matter of, hey, we want to just add classrooms again to the next school, because that can be more of an issue as far as schedule. I was told we're at the ideal level for elementary.
Yeah, for us, for some theory of thought historically has been, so for the most part, we have three at each school. At Greenwood Elementary, we have three kindergarten classes, three first grade classes, three sections of second grade, three across the board. Occasionally, we'll have a bubble class when we get a large group. It's an anomaly. If you get to four sections, if you just keep adding classrooms onto our existing buildings, to Todd's point, there are scheduling issues there. You soon would run out of art space and music space. You can't, there's other implications, scheduling and staffing-wise, that go into this. Not to mention you lose a community feel. When our principals can name every child in the building by name and know their parents' names, that's a good place to be. And if you grow to four-section elementaries at all of our schools, it's gonna, you're gonna lose some of that personalized family-like atmosphere. And so those will be debates that we will be faced with in the future. At what point, when that enrollment study is done, ask me that question in three or four months as well.
You know, it is a good discussion, a good question from your standpoint. A different way to respond to this is, as a district, we need to make sure that we're being as efficient with our facilities as possible. So, for example, we just met and the other night, talking about, and we're willing to Monday night, our classroom capacities. So at what point, is our first grade class full? So 25 to 27, somewhere in there is kind of where they all are. And then at what point do we start adding more? So it's not just adding more classrooms, because we may find more classroom space for that bubble class, etc. The other thing we have to be aware of, and so several of us found out that Hudson has hired a demographer. We're looking at a demographic study. They discussed the results at their June board meeting. So I watched it last night. You can see it on YouTube. A couple of other board members have seen it too. They're dealing with the problem. They're dealing with declining enrollment now. And now their enrollment in all their elementary schools is below their targets. So now they're trying to decide, do they combine buildings, etc.? So you can build too much, you get too spread out, or you can have, as Jamie mentioned, too many people in one building. So that's always the trick for us, is to know how many students you guys are planning on bringing into the community that we're gonna educate, right?
I spoke about that. Next time, we are going to schedule this for longer than an hour, so I'm gonna keep us going. And I'm gonna call on Jamie to start talking about our financial.
Yeah, we wanted to share with you another handout. It's like this one here. And we're gonna continue to talk about it. There's a companion memo that goes with the handout. Just for your reference, I'm not gonna read from the companion memo, but I am gonna just go through briefly. I want to share with you our plight from a financial standpoint. The legislature made a decision in this last biennial budget, which runs from 2021 to 23. We're right in the middle of that two-year state budget cycle. Traditionally, the cliff story that I want to tell you is related to some legislative decisions that were made related to the 21-23 budget cycle, specifically with school funding. And so if you turn to the second page, the cliff, I tried to define for you and explain a little bit that the legislature did not provide a normal round of funding. And they basically said you can backfill your school budgets with all of this federal COVID relief money that the feds provided to us. And instead of us at the state providing you a normal round of $200 per year, times two years, would be $400. You got all kinds of money from the Fed. Just use that money. And on one hand, you can say, well, I get that, even though I don't believe that was the intent of the Fed's money. The intent of the COVID relief money was to help address learning loss, to hire additional teachers, to lower class sizes, to have remedial math teachers and remedial reading teachers, to buy hotspots and technology and to address needs that were the result of COVID. But instead, our state legislature said, no, the feds are giving you all kinds of flexibility. You pretty much can use that money any way you want. You don't need to focus as much on the learning loss aspect with that money. Just use it instead of our typical state funding. And so we said, we'll do. We're moving forward. The problem is this cliff that gets created, that if we're using one-time federal money that is not recurring, we can use that, and when it's gone, it's gone. So we've lost our base funding that traditionally had been about $200 per pupil, times 3,500 kids. And then this next year would have been another 200, times 3,500 kids. Gets you to a $1.4 million cliff. And so, yes, it's true that we can use the federal money. The problem is, there will be this cliff that's there, and then if the state picks up with their normal round of funding again, there will be a gap. And we have had to make decisions to buy things that are recurring expenses, like adequately provide modest pay increases to our staff so that we can remain competitive and hire the best and brightest to be in front of our kids every day. And to do that, that's a recurring expense. You don't give staff members a raise this year and then turn around and give them a pay cut the following year. You understand all of that. So this cliff is created that we need to continue to advocate with our state legislature. And I'm going to allude to that if you turn to the next page. I kind of tell the story about this cliff a couple of different ways on a couple of different slides. But I'll take you down to the slide on the bottom of, I guess it's the next to last page, where it says state budget surplus. So just to draw the attention, that the state has a surplus right now of $3.8 billion with a B. And that is an independent report from the Legislative Fiscal Bureau. That $3.8 billion is actually $2.8 billion above the net balance that was projected at the time that the legislature made their decision to not give us any funding and to create the cliff. And there was a place where some of the soundbites that you would hear from some legislators is that, fear not, we will park some money over here in a little safe box and a little trust fund. And if needed, we may use that for educational funding. But they didn't commit to put an earmark on there, calling it money for education. It's open to any decision. Just to be fair to them, they talked about that as a future possibility. We need to continue to advocate that they do something with the cliff, that they do something with their $3.8 billion. We're not asking to secure $3.8 billion for education funding. We fully understand the state has other needs that they have to fund. But it's gonna cause a serious problem here locally. And so on the next page, the last page, I talk about some options for us, like the what next. Our what next would be budget cuts, reduce programs, reduce services, reduce staffing, increase class sizes as a result of reducing staffing, eliminate course offerings, defer maintenance, cut programs. Another option would be lobby the legislature. I'm encouraging you to please help us with that and have them address this cliff. And maybe down the road, it will also result in the need for a local referendum for operational expenses. So earlier, when we were talking about possible referendum for facility needs, that's referred to as a bond referendum. This other option is an operational referendum, just to pay your general operating bills, month-to-month payments, your operating expenses. So there's the potential for two forms of referenda in the future. Again, our what next then is the district getting off the doom and gloom budget story, but back to, we have a vision with our strategic plan. We know that we have to continue to advocate and create a budget plan that works and provides meaningful education for our kids. And through all of it, we are gonna continue to emphasize the need for us to be transparent and to communicate with our community. Ultimately, if we get to a point of needing a referendum, it'll be for the community to decide. And it'll be our job to help educate them through transparent, honest communication, as we do with all of our school business.
This is really an important issue facing the school district. Are there questions about this? Because we're anxious for you to understand certain potential of us advocacy.
So if I went to surrounding communities of our size in our state and I said, are you guys facing, are you facing the same fiscal cliff? What answer would they give us back?
Again, I don't know the percent, but I can safely say that this is a problem for many schools in Wisconsin. There are many schools having these same conversations. There, as you get closer to the legislature getting back into their budget cycle, those communications are gonna ramp up. The advocacies are gonna ramp up. You're gonna hear more about it. If you probably today, maybe, or within days, you could go to the DPI, Department of Public Instruction website, and they'll have results of referendum that have been held. And if you look closely, again, the difference would be if you see a bond referendum, that means that was for some facilities. But if you look for operational, that means they don't have enough money to operate, and they had to go ask their community for more money. And you're gonna see more and more and more of that throughout the state due to the cliff, due to this lack of funding for the two-year biennium. You'll also hear that X amount of dollars were provided directly in school funding. And it's a, it's a, it's a name, it's a name only called school funding. The good news for taxpayers is it provided some tax relief, is what the legislature did do. But they, you'll hear some of them call that school funding, ask for specifics on how the direct amount of money that went to schools to pay for operating purposes versus what of that went for property tax relief. And kind of peel back the curtain and make sure that you're hearing the facts on that. Because some are calling it school funding when it's tax relief. Am I bad-mouthing tax relief? Absolutely not. I'm not. We're concerned about the future funding. We're fine with our budget right now. I'm saying we have this cliff coming in '23. We're fine right now. It's '23 is the concern, '23 to '25 is that next two-year biennial budget.
If I could just add, this will be one of the top priorities for the Wisconsin School Board Association going forward. Represents over 400 school boards in the state. And it's not, as Jamie mentioned, that we're upset that our budgets aren't, it's that we need to make sure, because we know already, just with vacant seats, that approximately a fourth of the Senate and Assembly will be new people next year. So even though there were some commitments or some thoughts, we're setting this money aside. Well, all the new people coming in, new priorities, new political agendas, all those kinds of things coming forward. Will anybody remember that this is still out there? So we're real concerned about that. And we're not the only district in the state. I think every school board in the state has something concerned about.
Yeah, so Jamie, let me just ask you a question about the operating budget. You've got a $1.4 million hole cliff that you're gonna take care of. What does that referendum look like? Because when you go to make the ask, you can't ask for one year, because you're gonna speak back in the jargon. Yeah, you can do, you can ask operational referendums in a number of ways. One option is you can say it's recurring, meaning forever and ever and ever and ever. We want you to vote yes for $1 million added on to the tax levy to be spread out amongst all of us taxpayers forever and ever. That's called recurring. Or you can have a non-recurring, which is far more typical. And even in non-recurring, you can have it be three years, four years, five years. As long as there's an endpoint, it's considered non-recurring. And what some school districts have already had to do, particularly those in a state of declining enrollment, because school funding is so closely tied to enrollment, if you're declining enrollment, you've been in trouble for a long time. With some districts...
Um what some districts have done in their communities, including our neighbors to the south at Ellsworth, pass a non-recurring four-year referendum. Tell people when you're when you're asking them to vote for, we're probably going to have to come back in four years when this one's done and ask you to do it again, because it's just going to create another cliff, and you you just keep talking about it and talking about it, and you educate people, and they begin to understand it. And when that referendum falls off, it would, but if you pass another non-recurring referendum, then you don't really see the increase on your tax bill, because you were already paying that recurring, non-recurring first. If you vote yes, might not really have an impact on your tax bill. We just need you to keep supporting us. So non-recurring has an endpoint, but it can be one year, two year, three year, four year, five year, non-recurring.
Interest of time, yeah. In the interest of time, I think you got the idea.
And Jamie's prepared some important documents here, so I encourage you to read them. And at any point you have a question or would like some more discussion, please contact Jamie, contact board member.
Stacy, we can share a couple articles. There was one that referenced Nick's question about other districts in the Madison area, and then Alan shared one about degree bay of that in both of those papers. I would vote this one. So we did four of those opportunities.
I suspect it's one of those things like when you learn a new word, you see it around all of the place. And so that now that we have uh moved your ear to this issue, you might be noticing it. So my question to the city.
We'll move over to the city stuff. I know enough to turn it over to Mr. Simpson. Go ahead.
Thanks. I appreciate that. We have a short time and lots of good things to share. So I'll just mention that Jamie, Superintendent Benson and I will coordinate some follow-up. So you'll get some emails that'll follow up on the birdies things because they're required. For the reading, specifically, we'll send our strategic initiatives so you can see what what projects and efforts we have going on. A link to our development site, map that shows all the different proposals that brought the community, our housing study from 2018, and the PowerPoint uh slides that I played here briefly. On this, to summarize, the city's budget position would be difficult, but I'll do it in prompt anyways. Relatively stable. We hope you get some of the 3.8 billion, because we don't expect to get any. Local governments have been also rans for two decades. So we don't expect to get, but hopefully you'll get some of the surplus, because we've been planning to be on our own for a long time here. That being said, growth in the community has has helped make things a little bit easier for us as far as forecasting and trying to understand how we can meet the demands of service throughout the community. So we're at four point over over 4% net new construction growth in 2021, which is in the top prime quartile of the state of Wisconsin, similar to communities or similar to school districts that have declining enrollment. Cities that have no growth are in big trouble. Um they they have fiscal cliffs every year that they have to address. So we've been fortunate to, the the upside of growth and development is that it helps keep the engine running, and it keeps uh in a lot of ways, it helps to spread some of the costs of facilities that have some fixed nature across more people using the same services. That's not always the case. Sometimes more people needs more cost or more more services. So I'd say our budget will be reasonably stable, um at least in this next two-year period. Um that's we know, no changes are helped from the state on our end. And uh the the aid that came to the city was aid without too many strings attached, although there was some same sentiment that the state would have otherwise given us increases in shared revenue or other things that said, well, we don't need to do that because they have all this federal money. Um so that was just this year's excuse for them not increasing that. So we're used to kind of that, but I understand exactly the the what you're facing here, and it's a challenge. Um should mention that on redistricting with the 2020 census, there should be more effort on the part of people in this area to get coalition coalitions built with their representatives. We will have two US Congress people representing the city of River Falls. We have two Wisconsin senators representing the city of River Falls. We have two state representatives representing the city of River Falls. And if you increase your outlook to the boundaries of the school district, I think you probably pick up at least one more state representative. Um I don't know about state senator. I don't think so. So I think there's two two state senators, potentially three assembly persons now representing parts of the River Falls school district. So we we we've been talking, city staff, trying to get those eight or nine folks in a room and say, hey, how about we talk about some issues we've got going on. So I think that will be something for us to work on together. We're going to get a couple of them in a room next Monday. Good. So I'll I'll briefly go. I want to start by setting I guess, setting the tone that we're appreciative of this opportunity. This is unique. You know, why it is, it probably shouldn't be, but it is. My colleagues certainly don't have the opportunity um to bring their elected officials together to school very often across the state. And I think we understand, you know, this is only an hour and it's brief and all that, but it's good to to have faces and names for when we have things we need to work out that we can do. So um it's also important to know that we've done statistically significant randomly sampled citizen survey every two years for the last eight, 10 years. Repeatedly, natural environment, utilities, park and recreation, safety and education are in the high importance for those people taking the survey. So we know that education is part and parcel to the success of the community. Um and it's reflected in the survey results. That's why people want to live here. The natural environment, good utilities and park and recreation opportunities in connection to that natural environment and education and and safety are the things that bring people here. It's not a magic recipe. Um it's hard to repeat, but it is a recipe that we know is successful in making this a desirable place to live. Um so we'll quickly go through. Um there was two things that Superintendent and I discussed that we thought might be of interest. So we included a map of the updated Man Valley Corporate Park concept. I've probably been to a school board meeting three or four times in the last 13 years, and I think they've all been, um if I bet it by myself, it's all been related to the Man Valley development. So some of you are very familiar with this, this uh plan, others may not be. Um the map that you see reflected here is the 30%, what we consider to be a 30% design plan. It was recently updated by the council in June 20, June 28. So this kind of hot off the presses. Um you'll see that the school district's land is labeled as optional institutional, recreational, giving the school board the maximum flexibility for their future planning. We know you have studies to do and facilities to figure out. And we also understand that there is no plan other than the current use with the FFA alumni and cultural programs. So that's that's how that property has been planned into the overall bigger picture of the land out there. Um this is something um that's moving forward on an incremental basis, and within a within 18 to 24 months, we'll see some additional infrastructure, water, sewer, electric, natural gas was extended this this year by Sacred Valley. So this property is getting closer to ready for development, and it's an important piece of the future of the community. Um because we need uh we need residential residents, but we also need corporate park residents in order to keep the the mixture of tax revenues going in a sustainable way. So the second page is a close up. The the city purchased the Stern House Evan property, which is a farm and waterway for dry run along Countyham Division Street that is bordered by the school district property, and we will be requesting from the school district um an easement for water, sewer, and electric. That's shown in the uh in the blue. We're also talking potentially to the Johnson family about routes for water, sewer, and electric there. But the primary route that's proposed is what's shown as option one. Um we've tried to minimize the impact to the stated goals of the River Falls school district regarding its its agricultural use of that property, so try to minimize the impact of the utilities. Um in the future, we could jointly plan some access or trails or other things that would link the De Sanctus Regional Park to the new about 14, 15 acres of kind of parkish land that's um that's going to be just there to the west.
Just to mention to the board, Mr. Simpson has brought this easement to my attention well in advance. We brought it to the attention of the FFA alumni and high school instructor. Everybody's aware of it. We're not foreseeing it to be problematic. It's not going to disrupt what we do there currently. And at some point, the city will make this a formal request, right? You're bringing us the actual easement document and and so on.
Um then flipping the page to the, and I'll run through this, and then be happy to take any questions on any of that. The housing needs analysis, the community conducted a housing study with with Maxfield, their uh market analysis company that does a lot of analysis for private investors and developers to try to gauge the the need for housing in a community. Um the city took, um I I wouldn't say it's atypical. There's there are cities that are doing it, but it's not that usual for a city to conduct the study themselves. So we did, because we wanted to understand as we're seeing all these growth proposals, kind of where does it fit in the bigger picture of demand? And and are we improving things that we don't necessarily need or that there would kind of shape things differently? Um what we found out is that we had a serious shortage of housing, probably more serious of a shortage or more pronounced of a shortage than most of us thought before we went into the study. Um so just from a period of 2018 to 2022, when at the very beginning of the study, just to get to equilibrium, meaning, you know, beating basic demand for for housing, um the projection was 1,400 units for the five year period, just to get us to the point where we we didn't have 0% vacancy or 1% vacancy and and where we didn't have severe um lack of movement, no movement within the housing market. People are afraid to sell their house because they don't know where else they would go. Um particular, uh there's some language in the study that talks about active adult households or senior households, and their unwillingness to sell homes that they really aren't that interested in staying in, but that there isn't an alternative for them to retain their residency in the in the city. So they stay in a four or five bedroom house well past the time that they probably would want to do that. And then that creates all kinds of problems in the market, because there's no moving up into those homes, which doesn't free up, you know, smaller homes, more affordable homes. And so it just has all kinds of issues in the housing market. Um since 2018, we've permitted 780 units. Um there seems to be a lot of discussion in the community about, oh, everything's rental on all these apartment buildings, and we we need to get back to basics of single-family housing. I think it's interesting to note that 320 of those units were for sale. So what you would consider is kind of traditional uh single-family or uh single-family residences or twin homes. Um another 330 were for rent, and then 130 were age restricted senior housing. So you basically have a 50/50 mix on the non-senior housing of for sale and for rent, which is no different than the mix that we started with. So the mix of the community for a long time has been 50/50 rental. Um and uh and ownership, in particular, the amount of rental in single-family houses and twin homes has closely increased. So rental isn't just obviously apartment buildings. Rental is anything that's not owner occupied. So there's a lot of data available in that housing study. If people are interested to kind of dive into it, I I can't do it justice. Um one of the things that really hit home for me, I'm not, I've heard it from other council members and the plan commission, is building just about any housing helps all other types of housing. So the idea that if you have a shortage in um what we consider affordable or entry-level housing, just building that entry-level housing isn't necessarily the way out of the problem. You have to get housing in all categories, try to keep things mixing up, and it's hard to build your way through affordability, because new stuff costs more. So the way, a lot of the way to approach affordability is to get people to to change the housing types as their life goes on, so that they free up those other housing choices within the community. You don't have a lot of that going on in this community just because of the tightness of the market. So people are anecdotally, they're having to buy something that they're probably not ready for, but there isn't that middle for them to get into. So they kind of make the jump to, you know, they might have an infant and a seven-year-old, and they're buying a four-bedroom house because they're thinking about future family, whereas they they may otherwise be fine starting in that starting neighborhood with a two-bedroom house or something. So there's just a lot of distortion in the market. It's not unique to River Falls, the national, national problem. Um and that was another thing we learned. So we're just trying to do some things. So I guess the the takeaways is most of the housing that's being done is market rate. There isn't a lot of, there hasn't been a lot of effort. We consider deep subsidy or shallow subsidy, meaning houses that require some some change in the typical, you know, 30% of your income type housing based on the median income of the area. Um so mostly what you're seeing is market, what's considered market rate. So whatever they can get for it, that's what they they rent it for. Whatever they can get for it, that's what they sell it for. I think all of you who anecdotally know stories where things are getting more expensive and and harder to find. And I'm sure with teachers, it's it's acute, um given their, by perceived as their median income and what the the rental, median rental is right now, that's that's a challenge, significant challenge for all employers in the area. So first, most of this that's come on is that market rate, we're still well short of equilibrium supply. And in particular, deep subsidy, con or get senior, so nursing homes, and active adult ownership. So communities built around 50 plus but independent. Um so I'm going to get the names of things wrong. Let's hit myself to the Powell.
Commons.
Commons. I mean, so some neighborhoods that are more geared towards active adult living, maybe smaller size and houses, but share some shared amenities. Those are ones that we really haven't had any movement since 2018 on, and that there's a real need for, according to this this study. The council has authorized updating that, so we're in the process now of Maxfield kind of looking at, okay, here's what five years happened, what's changed in the market, and what advice can they give us? So there's a number of things planned. The next page is to kind of give you an idea. Uh Superintendent Benson and I talk often about where is the growth going to happen? That has a lot of impact on your elementary boundaries and planning for future facilities. River Falls has generally been seeing growth north, south, east, and west. So the city is generally growing from the inside out. Um growth has been somewhat pulled to the north along the freeway, but not really in a substantial or statistical way. So if you look at permits, they're north, south, east, and west. Um south is probably going to be the more challenging part of the community to get more housing units in, given the boundaries and topography and geography. But I would expect east and west and north will continue to get some growth if I if I was looking in a crystal ball. Um even with all the units that are proposed or in the hopper, we're still, we haven't even got to the point where even if we approved everything that was coming through in the next couple of years, we would hit that equilibrium. So that that's a big thing for people that it certainly can be jarring to see five acres turn into 100 units or two acres turn into to 60 units. And it seems like a lot in the bigger picture, but you are in a community that has nearly 6,000 housing units. So 60 new units in a big building still statistically is not that significant of an increase in your housing stock, but certainly has, it does change people's perspective about micro areas within the community. So that's something that council is acutely aware of. Um and they've endeavored to do the comprehensive planning process that we're in right now. I know the school district has landed a number of people on different committees. Endeavored to do the comprehensive planning process that we're in right now. I know the school district has landed a number of people on different committees and things, talked about bike and pedestrian. Routes to schools and how we make connection with parks and facilities and what our city is going to look like when we grow up. So. Encourage all of you that haven't participated to jump on in, to engage RF. And then I think that's. Probably a good spot to stop on facilities. We've made significant efforts on utilities and parks. The next efforts that the city likely has to keep its eye on is fire and public works or operations facilities. There may be at some point some synergies that could be created with our public works operations and the 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 school district's fleet and operations. Departments. It's a little unknown and I think we'll know more when we see the school district's facility study. And then the city is also. Doing a facility study for operations and public works. That'll give us a little bit better idea of what they think we need and go in the future to accept that there's opportunities to to cooperate on. My understanding and my conversation with the school district is that they're they're willing to have those discussions. And I know the city's council is encouraging me to have those discussions in our game. So that's that's what I have prepared.
I think in the interest of time, we've got nine minutes left. We want to quickly cover maybe the. The item number six and and then maybe if we can leave the last five minutes for just a couple of questions, Stacy.
That sounds like a.
Yeah. Well, no, just a couple of things that Scott and I had listed here. We obviously enjoy and really appreciate the partnership that we have in the. School Resource Officers, SROs, where we now have two on staff and we share that. Expense with the district. I don't think we can put a dollar amount on the value of having both of those positions, but wanted to recognize. We're very pleased with both officers and want to thank the city for the partnership on that. Recently added some pedestrian crosswalks. We worked with a local donor. And with the city and coordinated with the city so that the crosswalk blinking flashing light. Increasing safety for pedestrians. We're in line with the design that the city already had in place. You at the city level have been helping us with our school forest with some mapping, some real nice mapping technology that you have so that. As we're designing some trails and wanting to do some configurations. Mike Stifter, Mike Noreen, their staff have been really helpful. We had. Shared a. More, I don't know, was that a pecan? Is that called pecan more, Mike, that you guys were using and sent it out to the school for us and we were able to. Take advantage of those kind of partnerships. We we just really appreciate it. And the the big one of late is. That you're allowing us to use the old police station. We're a little concerned about the rent rate that you're charging us. That that dollar that you're charging us is. As appreciated as is just the availability of the facility. And I think that. We all know that our taxpayers like to see. When governments are collaborating, it's their tax dollar that's at play. Here and we just really appreciate all of those partnerships. And I just want to highlight that most recent one with the old police station. We'll be moving in there with our Renaissance alternative charter high school. In January for a for a temporary stay. So thank you for all of those partnerships.
Stuff. We're all appreciative. We'll open it up for questions in just one moment. I want to go back to A. And say that there are a variety of models. Across the country in terms of what the relationship is like between the school resource officers and. The school buildings, what the school day is like. We as a board are particularly pleased with the model that we have landed on with your support in our schools. It's it works, it serves our community and our students really well. I think Cindy wanted to say that and Alan really quickly because, yeah.
Yeah, you know, to see the to see our kids come home and talk about the school resource officers is incredible. And their partnership with our teachers and staff in the schools, their relationships that that our teachers and staff are willing to or. Have been able to make right with our students, the engagement that every day, meeting our students where they are, personalizing their education and in partnership with their school resource officers has been. Just monumental for our schools and our students and our families. So thank you for that partnership.
You know, there are really two parts then, and we dwell on this only because this is really important to us. You know, that because there's there's. First off, their role is preventative. And how unique that is to what the stereotype is of police officer, which is, you know, it's law enforcement, all those kinds of things. The role of those two people is preventative and it works and it's worked for years. And in part. Because we have this good cooperation with the city and we funded, we there's good communication back and forth. But it's also the nature of the personalities of those two officers, the officers that have consistently filled in. And the way this will continue to work is for us to continue to work together. But for those two positions to be staffed with the kind and quality of people that have been there. The other part of this cooperation and knowing that we've got those two really good, high caliber, well trained professionals. Is in terms of if we ever have a school shooting incident. Okay. And it's something we can't minimize at all because I'm sure the folks in Uvalde, Texas never thought it was going to happen to them. But part of the disaster was that they weren't prepared for it. And when it comes down to it, we're going to depend on the police force in this city, Gordy and the staff and how good they are and all of that. Protect our kids and work with us on it. And the relationship we've had going there is just so good. So I want to thank you really. For joining in that with us because of the preventative nature and the constructive nature in it. They're so nice.
So on an annual basis, the officers come to the school board and give us a report about what they've done. If they don't do that. For your meetings, you might consider inviting that because it's a very, very interesting presentation. And I think you'd be pleased to hear what they do in school. So with that. Open conversation. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everyone today. And I do see something of interest when I I talk about housing studies. I study housing a lot. And the first thing you guys talked about, things of interest earlier on was the animated bus garage. Well, I see a potential partnership or opportunity with that. Using TID, Tax Incremental District. Where we can share cost savings to actually help both of our governmental bodies. And I'm just curious if that's a realistic way of looking at that, Mr. Simpson.
Yeah, I think that's part of this, the. The mix. So just like we've been talking about, if we move the fire station, that site, the current fire station, yeah, be. Involved in some other developments proposed that then would provide revenue to help with the fire station. You could have the same type of scenario with the bus garage location potentially.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
And a question for Scott. Scott, I listened to this and I want to get focused on the school board meeting. I saw from Hudson the other night, their G B. But Mr. Mopler's report and their conversation in part, one of the things, you guys got to watch it if you haven't yet. Their school board president said they've added over eleven hundred housing units in the last couple of years and have a decline in enrollment. There, all that housing that went in across Carmichael from the dog track, you know, that whole area in there, kind of south of the flea park. They got fifteen students out of that. It has a big impact on Rivergrass, for example, their enrollment. So for us, we're going to have some of that kind of study then. We're trying to figure out if. What's the housing do? Because that's one more complicated thing is what you're saying. And again, how complicated that is, Scott. So we do increase housing here. Is it families with kids or is it not families with kids? And are we going to be different than that? We're we're different than them in a lot of places.
I got you.
Other comments?
I just whispered to the 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 president here, but six o'clock is is rather arbitrary. So there's, I mean. They have to get to the council meeting at six thirty. So we can't speed, but if you have. So seven, they need seven or eight minutes at least.
So then I would just ask, for a long time, habit that humanity was reactive in the community. They did the Eco Village and all of that. But I have not heard much from that organization or much activity from them. Are they still around when they come to town?
They are active. They're in town. The latest that they did was brush with kindness. So they focused their last River Falls effort on an improvement, neighborhood improvement project. So in the Johnson, Johnson Street area, we did a project with them. Where the city contributed some things and then Saint Ray Habitat did. And then I think Anderson City employees made others that kind of. Maybe some improvements in that neighborhood. They've done. Only a few single family homes each year. I know that there was some interest because their Saint Ray Habitat, they would not just do all their stuff in River Falls, even though we were good to work with. So. So they've done New Richmond, I think they did a robbery hall bill. They've done a couple in Hudson, I want to say, the last ten years. So. They're likely to come back and find some some things to do. They haven't talked about doing. Anything at the scope that they did with that Eco Village, but essentially I think their thought was they did, I don't want to speak too much for them. They did a lot of housing for them as a percentage of their overall housing. In that one shot in River Falls. And so then now they've done kind of one or two. They had a couple lots in Spring Valley. I think they had. Through some of the proposals and things. So they're still out there. So they're definitely active and working. I think as hard as ever, but they just haven't been doing. Digging foundations in River Falls necessarily.
I had a conversation, I saw him at an event last Wednesday, the executive director in their. Their fundraising person. And then I just saw that they opened a restore again in Hudson now, just the other day. So there's some, there's some activity, but I think as Scott mentioned, it's more sacred county wide than it is focused.
But we get a chance to do this again sometime soon. This is some beneficial to get everybody together and hear what's going on and. Ask questions and maybe a little more than an hour next time would be nice.
I think so too.
One of the things I I appreciate about it because our roles are, we're the two non partisan legislative bodies. And the fact that we just had a big long discussion and we didn't have any partisan background. It was great. So I really appreciate that. We need it.
I think it also, it it just goes to show our goal. Our goal is to serve the people in our community. And we can do that best when we find ways to collaborate, when we listen to each other, whether it's shared resources and we share ideas. So. On the school district side, we're very appreciative of these meetings and we look forward to continuing our tradition.
And I think I I speak for the council when I say the same. I mean, we we appreciate the interaction, even though we. Have a little different boundary. The school district obviously has a larger boundary, but the bulk of. Stop to the city, finding ways to collaborate together and work together is important.
And from our standpoint, we also appreciate that that Tina and Scott speak on a very regular basis and so that we know that we're keeping each other up to date on. That feels so important. All right. Well, this meeting is adjourned. Have a good next meeting. We have double letters with people who are in place. We know what it's like.